Yes, sir.
Now, Paul, the city council regular meetings order six P M. February fourteenth, please rise to invocation of flag of allegiance. The invitation to my counsel, Williams, for inquiry.
Thank you for bringing us all here tonight for keeping us safe and healthy and more, you know, what each and every one of us needs this evening and as we go forth, and more if it's a healing or discernment or wisdom, I'm asking that you give that to each and every one of us, for our family members and our friends. And more, give us wisdom and discernment that we need tonight and all of these decisions that we're going to make and even throughout our country, Lord, those that are in leadership over us, I ask that you give them the same wisdom in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see. Matt Clark, you'll please call roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McHear?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Your mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a form.
I'm here. All right. I have number four. We have an event request. Airstream Ventures jet ski races Lake Aurora. We have someone to speak on that event here. I believe he's online there.
Yeah.
I'm here too.
Who do we have to speak for Airstream Ventures?
This is Alan Verlander. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Alan Verlander with Airstream Ventures. Sorry, I was, I'm in the car, but um we're really excited about this Pro Water Cross event coming to Avon Park. It's a national series that is, has events all over the country. It is broadcast on CBS Sports Network nationally and it's just gonna be a great event that we can bring to the city and it has professional teams and professional riders coming in from all over the country that'll be spending several days in Avon Park and will ultimately, it will be, it will open up the the racing series. So this will be the first event of the racing series. And we're really excited about it. There'll be a lot of interest in this and if you've never seen the Pro Jet Ski Tour, these jet skis are probably eighty, ninety thousand dollars each and they, these big tractor trailers come in and it looks kind of like NASCAR teams coming into the area. And so the, the whole setup will be take place on that Friday and we'll be getting everything set up and placing the boos and getting the teams situated and then all the competition, we practices on Friday. All the competition will happen Saturday and Sunday will crown the first events champion.
Excellent. Well, your request looks pretty straightforward. There's not too much detail here. I believe that you will be asking to close roads potentially at some point. Is that right?
Yeah, we're, that is correct. We will be doing a site visit with with AJ from Pro Water Cross and then also bringing in CBS Sports to do site visits, then look at camera locations and all that. And so until we know all of those different things, we won't know officially if we'll have to close maybe one of the lanes there, but that is a potential.
Okay. I see food trucks. I don't see alcohol. We'll have road closure.
We will not be serving alcohol.
Okay.
Yeah, we will not be serving alcohol. We'll just have some food trucks for people that you know, want to come and watch and have a great event and just have some food options for people and also get some of the food trucks in Avon Parks in business along with the restaurants and everybody right there on Main Street.
Sounds like it's gonna be a great event. We really appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Is there anything to add from the staff? No, we're, we've been working with them and when they get on ground here, we're gonna meet with them and see if they do need to close a portion of Main Street. We'll get left out. Okay.
The only, obviously, insurance and indemnification requirement and agreement, if you feel like it's appropriate, but although you, you can designate the park for these types of events, I would wonder whether you can designate the lake, you know, for what they're gonna need, which is probably rope off just about everything in the lake. So I'll just throw that out there. Not our job to figure that out. It's hard to figure that out, but you know, we can allow the park, but we can't, we can't, I don't see the ability to allow the, the lake.
That would come between them and F W C, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you're aware of your responsibilities with dealing with Florida lakes. It's probably not your first video. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any questions for them from the council? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Go ahead, Jim.
I make a motion to go ahead and prove item number B four.
Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHear?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Verlander, we thank you very much for your time. We look forward to it.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you and bringing a great event to Avon Park.
All right. Item number five, we have an event request for the eleventh annual Avon Park Rotary Bluegrass and Blueberry Festival. We have Mr. David Flowers with us. David, go ahead. Oh. We got you muted there, David. Hold on one second. Try it now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. It's my pleasure to come to you on behalf of the Avon Park Rotary Club. We are looking to do our eleventh annual Blueberry Festival this year on April twenty-third at Donaldson Park and we are requesting your assistance in approving our request and we will, as we get into it a little bit later on, we'll need some assistance from the city staff as well.
Okay. Well, like David said, this is something that's been going on for quite a while. It's usually very well attended. It's a great event.
Last year, we had over four thousand people there. We actually had to turn down some vendors that were trying to come in at the last minute. We had over fifty vendors there last year. It was a wonderful, wonderful success and we're hoping to have even bigger and better this year.
Well, keep it coming.
Okay.
Do we have any questions for David from the council or the staff?
Yes, I have a question. Most of the vendors are coming from Avon Park?
No, some are from Avon Park, but most of them are from out of town and around the state.
So out of the four thousand, I'm not sure if you say you had four or you had to, however many you had, how many was Avon Park vendors?
Okay, we had over four thousand attended the festival last year. That was an estimate. We weren't really counting, but it was packed all day long. The actual vendor number, vendors from Avon Park, I can't tell you, but I would tell you it was probably in the high twenties, maybe mid thirties.
Anything else?
Sounds good.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and prove item number B five.
Okay, do you want a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll call roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHear?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We look forward to seeing you at the Blueberry Festival this year. Thank you.
David, thank you. Item number six, we have an event request for the Vet Jam Battle of the Bands. The VP Ray Young speaking to this. Mr. Young, you'll come up, please. Stepping into a big role, sir.
I'm here to tell you.
Please give your name and the association there.
My name's Ray Young. I'm the vice president of Battle of the Bands. We're trying to pull this together. We got really big shoes to fill. Everybody, I think, is familiar with Anna Marie Feeney. Her daughter is her president. We kind of symbolize this year. We want to bring it back to Donaldson Park where it started. Kind of like a rebirth of an ongoing organization. So we're requesting three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, eight, nine, and ten of April. We hope not to need any lane closures whatsoever. But just like I said, we're trying to keep her legacy alive, keep it going. We're all pretty inexperienced. So you're gonna have to work with us as we go, but we're welcoming any pointers.
Okay. Well, you got a good, a good plan already. You've, you've got your insurance in there for us right out of the gate, which is rare. So we appreciate that very much. Do we?
Could need the waiver on the open container law if you're, they're serving, distributing alcohol.
Are you serving alcohol at this event?
We usually let the fire department serve it, but yes, we do.
It doesn't matter who does it.
Okay, so whenever it comes time to make that motion, suggestion from you?
Yeah, distribution.
Yeah, I've got that is, okay, because I got alcohol variants written in the motion there. Would we want to do them in separate motions or? Ask him.
Oh, ask him, we can. Separately.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Young?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, do you take this event on Sunday all the way to ten o'clock?
No, ma'am. Sunday, we usually run eleven to seven.
Oh.
Any other questions?
Any vendors?
Plenty.
And?
In the past, all of our food vendors have been local.
Okay.
I would say probably a third of our dry good vendors are local. We reached our locals first. We give them first shot at it. Then we reach out on festivalbiz.gov, whatever it is, for people in surrounding areas. But we do, we absolutely try to touch here at home first.
Any other questions? All right. So first, we'll have a motion for the event itself and then we'll have a separate motion for the waiver alcohol container. Is there a motion for the event?
I'm gonna make a motion to remove B six around advance.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. No further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHear?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Jerry, if we want to make a motion to allow the distribution of alcohol at this event, would you give us a sample of what that motion will be?
The, uh, move to waive the restrictions on sale and, and open, and open container provisions of the city code for this event only.
Is there a, so moved?
So.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in seconds. Are any questions?
No, I just want to comment. Of course, you'd still have, you have to arrange things with the state or permits and so on, and there will be a higher level of insurance. I don't know. I didn't look at your insurance to see if it covers it or not, but we do require more insurance for alcohol events.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHear?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Young, we look forward to it.
Thank you. We're gonna keep it alive.
Do you have any questions? I'm sure the staff will be more happy to help you out.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven, this will be the consent agenda for the minutes for January twenty-fourth. City Council regular meeting. Is there a motion? I'm all jumped at once. Okay.
Remove B six, I'm sorry, C seven minutes from January twenty-fourth.
All right, is there a second?
Seconding.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHear?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number eight, we have a briefing and update of the airport lease with FAM. We have our outside counsel, Mr. David Bernard on. I see him there. Is he unmuted?
I am unmuted. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. What in the world's going on?
Well, the FAA was not, not as friendly as we'd hoped and did not, did not seem to like the way that the the, the concept of a lease of the airport and we explained to them what, what the city's goals were and they understood that. They gave us a bunch of comments, but they encouraged us to consider going through the privatization program. So I, I don't know, I don't know if I can share my screen with you, but I've got, we've got a set of slides that we put together. It's actually about three slides long to just kind of give you an update on where we are.
Okay.
So let me see if I can do that. So have you got the screen up?
We do.
Okay, great. So, and this is, this is an aerial view of the airport. And we'll kind of come back to this so we can talk about the proposal a little bit, but where, where we are is the council approved a draft lease agreement in August of twenty twenty-one, which we submitted to both the FAA and to Florida D O T. Florida D O T pretty promptly turned around some very minor comments to us in September. And the FAA, I had a, a brief meeting with the Director of Compliance in December of twenty-one, where he suggested we ought to be looking at the A I P P program. So we talked about that a little bit with the, the small group that's been working on this internally. And we also reached out to, to the folks at Florida Airport Management after our FAA meeting. So we had a virtual meeting on January twenty-sixth with Kevin Willis, who's the FAA National Airport's Director of Compliance and his team, some folks from the FAA Chief Counsel Office and the, the FAM team. Excuse me, and the, and the city Avon Park team. They gave us their comments on Friday, the twenty-eighth, and when, when we looked them over, it was pretty clear that they had not really digested this all that well, but that they really did not want us to take the approach that we were, we were trying to do. So we had a follow-up meeting with J T, Tom, and, and his team on, from FAM on February second and kind of walked them through where we were with both the FAA and the kind of two ways we could go. One was to take all of the FAA suggestions, divide this up into a separate management agreement and a lease of the airport. Work it through with the FAA. There is, or we could go through the process of doing a brief management agreement between the city and FAM, try to put that in place relatively quickly. Enter into, I'll, I'll go through that in a second, but, but basically there are two avenues and as, as we, we wanted to give FAM a chance to think about it since this was not, you know, not exactly what they had expected. So we had a follow-up meeting with J T. And I'll kind of skip to that. The follow-up meeting really kind of came out to do you want to try to go through the privatization program but set up a, a management agreement as quickly as possible? And for those areas that you need to get under contract for leasehold quickly, try to do that as separate parcels. That, I think, is what both, what FAM wants to do and we think that probably is the quickest way to accomplish this. And it will allow the FAA to, as they said, they need a win for the privatization program and they agreed with us that they would try to move that forward quickly. So as you can see down here in this fourth bullet, the FAA has grant funds up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cost of going through this program. So rather than sitting, having, sitting, having to pay the costs of, of preparation, new documents and negotiations and going through the process with the FAA, the FAA can pay for that. So if this is, if the city council would like to pursue this arrangement, we would go to the FAA and basically say, we'll take them up on the A I P P program. They indicated that they would try to expedite that and while we've got twelve to eighteen months, which I think is probably more reasonable, they said they'd try to do it in six. In, and as I said initially, the idea would be to have a management agreement between the city and FAM, enter into that as quickly as possible so that the city would no longer have to be managing the airport. And then lease specific pieces of the airport that are gonna be used by FAM through basically setups, separate plots, use a standard form of agreement, use that revenue to help pay or to basically pay FAM for the management fee and let them get started on their, on their projects to help create some jobs and get some more activity out at the airport. And then we would go through the process of privatizing the airport through a long-term lease. It would, it would basically be the the more or less the same structure that the city council has already approved. So a lease of thirty years plus options that were extended up to forty-nine. But it would allow the funding to be directly payable through through to FAM so that they would be able to apply for grants directly. So what we want to do is make sure that the city has the appropriate controls over the development at the airport that we'd already kind of worked into the lease. Make sure that you've got that control, but that the, through the A I P P program, FAM has a little bit more ability to take money off the airport in a way that's pretty similar to the revenue sharing model that we had set up. So our goal is to structure a, a program that in the short term allows them to get moving quickly, allows the city not to have to deal with the management of the airport and starts to bring in some revenue activity quickly. And then over the little bit longer term, privatizes the airport through a lease so that the structure of the deal is very similar to what you've already approved. So let me ask if there are any questions at this point and then I, I believe that, that J T had, had joined the call as well and if you had any questions for him. You know, want to encourage you to ask him if you have any questions since obviously Florida Airport Management is a key player here.
Got a few questions for you. So the grant, seven, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, is that a one hundred percent grant? It's not a matching grant?
I, I believe it's a one hundred percent grant that's available from FAA for the, to, to pay for the expenses associated with participating in the privatization program.
Would that cover all of our outside councils expenses as well?
It's, that's intended to cover your outside council expenses, your consulting expenses and, and the cost of some of the work that we'll need to kind of develop the documentation.
I'm not gonna argue with them, but it seems bizarre that they would give you trouble for going through one program, but they want to pay you seven hundred and fifty K to go through a different program.
It, it does not make intuitive sense, but I think the logic behind it is that this is a program that Congress put in place quite some time ago. They've not had a lot of success with it. This is an opportunity for them to, you know, show a, a, you know, a real win. That's exactly how Mr. Willis described it, is the program needs a win. So Congress has authorized some money for, for, you know, paying expenses associated with it. They're happy to, they're happy to give that out if we can get them a win.
Who knows when politicians do what they do, right?
Uh, it's sometimes.
On the privatization point, just to be doubly clear for everyone, though it sounds like this would be a one hundred percent private situation, it would not be hardly any different from what we had originally proposed, right? The city would still maintain control of the airport as far as what gets built out there and all the other controls that we've tried to put in place.
That's, that's correct. The way, the way we've talked about it with, with Sam is that it would still be a lease of the airport rather than a sale. The city would still own the airport. The, the difference really is that FAM can contract directly with the FAA for grant funding and can take some of the money that basically the, the management fee that we had tried to work out as a, as a revenue sharing, we can work out so they can take it directly off the airport. But we will structure the deal so that the city has a, has the same degree of control over what gets built and what gets done out at the airport as, as we'd set it up in the, in the lease that the council approved in August.
Okay, so in no way are we taking away from the general aviation people who want to use the airport.
No, no, we're, we're not gonna take away from G A people and in fact, FAM really is looking to, my understanding is they're looking to not only support them, but to, to grow that kind of operation out there.
Right. It would be a money maker. I'm just simply asking because most of the detractors of this agreement have all been more or less general aviation people with the fear that they would not be able to use the airport. So I just want to be doubly clear that that's not gonna go anywhere and those people will still be able to use the airport as they always have.
Yeah, no, that's, you're, you're absolutely right. And the FAA will demand that the, that the general aviation operators continue to have, you know, access to the airport, be able to use it.
Very good. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Bernard? Okay. Mr. Bernard, are you handing it over to J T at this point or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to hand it over to J T. I'm, I'm assuming J T, you'd like to say a word or two, but I, I'm, I'll get out of the way here.
Okay, J T, are you there?
Yes, sir. Hello, council. How are we doing today?
Doing very well yourself?
Fantastic. Thanks for having us on the agenda today. Yeah, I, I concur with everything that David said in your last remark. No, we have, you know, this will remain a public airport. We'll support the G, G A aviation community out there. We still just want to move forward with our industrial hemp applications and our emergency management programs, which kind of a quick legislative update, we were in Tallahassee for a week in January working with Representative Kaylee Tuck's office for the eighteen and a half million appropriations. We did make it through first committee on the House side. We've also, on Senator Albritton's front, we have been assigned a L F I R code. So things are moving quite well as far as the appropriations request is going. We also had several meetings with D E M. They love the program we put together for them. And so those agreements, that's kind of why we want to do a management agreement as quickly as possible so we can facilitate those. As far as the short-term leases are concerned, we'll still need to survey and replat the land because none of the deeds actually don't co, the deeds do not coincide with what the leasehold interest would be, which, you know, in reviewing the, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand, those surveys, the cost for those surveys, the cost for another M A I appraisal and even the money that FAM has spent up to date north of a hundred thousand dollars will all be reimbursable through that program. So at least we can start our short-term and medium-range goals under a management agreement. And we're honored that the FAA wants to facilitate the A I P P program. It really dovetails in with our state agenda for both the agrarian side and emergency response side, so.
J T, if you'll remind me, this A I P program was something that you guys had considered in the beginning, but the length of time was longer than the route that we were trying to take. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So, well, we did not want to be confused in privatization for a fee simple per, purchase. We definitely need to, want to lean on FAA grant dollars. We want to lean on state dollars, infrastructure dollars. And so we didn't want to be kind of cornered into that. And plus, given the time of Uh and plus, given the time of um length that the FAA took to review, uh even RP three proposal. We, we try to, we try to avoid it, but you know, this is where we're at and we've gotta evolve with the uh situation.
Okay, does counsel have any questions for DJ?
No, I just have one comment, it's, it sounds like uh. With FAA joining with this AIPP program, it, it looks like they finally actually have legitimized. This whole uh public participation program, and so I think it's uh. Let's move forward with the management section and let's see what happens after that.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Hey counsel, this is Casey Roberts, Florida Airport Management, I just wanted to. Kind of point out something specific, we keep talking, saying the word privatization. And that was uh, you know, in the beginning with Mr. Bernard was saying. It's, it was a program that started a long, a long time ago and it was called the privatization program, that was what the APP and AIPP stood for. They literally changed it last year of April to partnership program. And they, they changed some of the boundaries of it for this specific reason, and that's why they need a win. Cause they weren't getting wins with the privatization side of it. They're officially trying to make sure to get a win by changing the name and changing some of the parameters, which actually. Met some of what we were requiring and requesting, so. Uh it just a time and place and everything that came together with it. Has put us in a really good position to uh work with the FAA on this and get them a win, get you guys a win. And uh get us a win as a whole, so it it couldn't be better timing, just remember, it's, it's partnership program now. It's no longer called privatization, cause they, it just didn't work, uh so the, the FAA wants to partner with. Uh entities like us to to get wins for airports like this, so just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Very good, thanks for your comment. Uh Mr. Bernard, what exactly are you looking from the coun- looking for from the council tonight to get this going?
Uh I I defer to your counsel, but I, I think we wanted a sense that this, that this was an acceptable. Um route to go from the, from the council and um the, since the. Basic financial terms are not gonna change, what, what I think we'll do is we'll be coming back to you with. The management agreement, hopefully within. You know, I, I would like to come back to you with a management agreement within a few weeks. Um I'd like to really push that as quickly as we can. Um uh Jerry, I don't, I don't know exactly, you know, what, what we're gonna need to do from a um Florida. Um municipal law standpoint, so I defer to you on all those things.
No, we really don't need a vote, just, you know, if somebody had an objection, I guess you would have heard it. So I think we just proceed in that order, which is, which is spoke, um and then bring the agreement, which has to be proved, obviously.
So that if, if this is acceptable to counsel, the next steps would be. Um we've already prepared a rough draft of the management agreement, we will, we'll try to get that. Um smoothed out and make sure we get um the, the comments and then get it over to Florida Airport Management to. Let them uh take a look at it, um you know, we'll see if, how much uh back and forth we need, but I. Think that given, you know, we've spent a lot of time already working these things through, we should be able to resolve those pretty quickly. In the meantime, I'll reach out to Kevin Willis um at FAA and let him know that. Um the city would like to go through the AIPP program. And would like to uh um to take advantage of the funding available to pay the expenses and um. We'll, we'll get that started and um work with Lowell on, on that part of the process as well.
And if you could make sure there's no uh. Problems with the, the funding, you know, as far as uh things that we're gonna have to do or or as the mayor said, sharing. Then uh that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do, um we, ultimately, we'll, we'll need to, to submit an application to the FAA, we'll probably wanna do that. Relatively quickly, but given, given um fam's desire to kind of get in there and get going, I think our first priority is to try to. Get the management agreement set up so that, so that fam can start um working at the airport and, and frankly, I think. You know, from the expressed goals of the city, that seems like probably the uh best route for the city to take as well, so that. Um the city won't have to be expending resources on managing the airport.
Excellent, all right, is anyone opposed to this? Seeing none, you have your affirmation to get going on it?
We will do it, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, and gals.
All right, at number nine, we have a public hearing, this will be second reading for ordinance number oh one dash twenty twenty two.
So ordinance to amend the city of Bayonne, Heart, Florida citation form of code enforcement, provide for amendment of the city code sections. Two dash three fifty one, two dash three fifty three through two dash three sixty one, provide for definitions and flexibility. Provide procedures for enforcement, provide for penalty classifications and amounts. Provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, provide for inclusion in code, provide for stream reserves, provide for sustainability, and ineffective data.
Okay, as I said, this is a second reading for the noise ordinance, so. Ordinance number oh one dash twenty twenty two, this will be a public hearing, public hearing, that ordinance is now open, anyone wishing to speak. On ordinance number one dash twenty twenty two can now do so. This is the noise ordinance, basically giving us uh giving law enforcement the right to.
This is not, not just a noise ordinance, it's any uh code that we want enforced by citation as opposed to um. The code enforcement special magistrate or, you know, uh that, it's just a different procedure.
Yeah.
Um is which uh is better for certain circumstances, okay?
Anyone wishing to speak on that can now do so. Going once, twice, public hearing for zero, ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty two is now closed. We'll be looking for a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve item number D nine, ordinance number oh one dash two oh two two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Item number ten, we have the first reading of ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty two, ordinance returning capacity fees to create twenty twenty change.
As you recall from the last meeting, uh voting to take us back to the uh. Capacity fees that were uh prior to this uh uh ordinary water study. And um this will discuss, it takes us back to those uh with previous uh amounts and. ERCs, so um. Uh we did, it's a warrant, so the city of Bayonne, Heart, Florida, binding recitals as to this council purpose and intent, providing for the water, waste water treatment plant. Fees to lower them back to. Capacity fees to lower them back to the pre two thousand twenty rates, provide. Or related corrections to the code, provide for. Clarification and appeal of conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, provide for separately, provide for. So this one, though, as you see, the changes are pretty substantial, as I understand it, this is just uh temporary. Uh until the ordinary water association. Uh gets here and uh does the rate study, we asked you to look at this as well and see if it. Um uh or better explain in regard to the ERCs, which went from. Uh three hundred down to one fifty nine, which uh basically doubled the rates, even though the rates were. That would be charged well as well.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So I have a question on that, so we just. Um agreeing on for the study.
No, this is reverting the rates back to what they were before the twenty twenty change.
So this is for, this is a capacity fees, the capacity fees are fees we charge a new business coming in. Based on their usage, so they may basically in theory uh reserve. Uh space at our treatment plants that then um and and that cost is of the treat, building treatment plants is allocated to them based on how much they need. For their business to reserve, and uh what we had done is we had a formal water study. But it, it not just raised them, but raised them really high.
Right.
And um so this is taking us back to before that study, and we're gonna have them look at it again.
So we just both have looked at it again?
No, we're, this will be, this will be bringing the rates back to that pre, that pre two thousand twenty study.
Okay.
Which is significantly lower.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm making a motion, we approve item number D ten for ordinance number oh two dash twenty twenty two.
There's a second. We have a motion in a second, any further questions?
I just have one comment to make sure everybody is aware of that the county is now considering. Also going back to impact fees for the county, so that's something we need to uh. Keep an eye on before we have to make a decision in the future when we get our new uh, our, a new reading.
Yeah, so Jim, on that, they basically agreed to do similar thing to this, they're, they agreed to have a study done. So that study's gonna be done later on this year, not the beginning of next year, and then they will examine it at that point. So all they agreed to do is basically have a study, because they haven't had one in over ten years, they couldn't change the rate, even if they wanted to, until they have a study.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
If um, if we agree on today to take the fees back to what they originally were.
Yes.
When are we gonna go back, when are we gonna go back in?
The studies?
Yeah.
Uh so we had asked for the study, any update on when they can get here?
Uh not as yet, we're still supplying them with information and are um.
It was definitely gonna be this year, right?
Yes, um yeah.
So before, before the end of the year, I think we had talked about the end of summer or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in seconds, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you. Item number eleven, we have the Florida.
I'm sorry, if I may, um we have been brought up with a challenge on the leans regarding um. The capacity fees.
Okay.
Um and I talked to um our attorney about it and think he's.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you did have to bring that up, I forgot, um I wrote a note down here, missed it. So um they brought up the issue that um um what happens if somebody's leasing uh property. Uh with regard to the leans that are gonna uh they're gonna encounter, if they give a payment plan on the uh this, this. This capacity fees. And the issue is that if you're leasing, you're not gonna be able to lean the property that's actually applied to, cause these capacity fees. Don't apply to an individual or to a particular business, they apply to property. Uh a structure that is, you know, utilized it now. In the future, that, that may need more or might need less, but this is gonna be the level that they're, they're paying for. Is gonna be what it's gonna be set for, for that, whatever unit they're gonna use. And so um with that, lease, you're not gonna be able to um lean the property. The, the possibilities there are that um the, the um landlord has to agree to allow a lien.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, and, and um if you wanna have security, that's gonna get paid. Because otherwise, which is security gonna be, they, you know, about some equipment, but the equipment will already be leaned by the uh. The landlord, which is pretty typical for shopping centers and so on, they'll lean it first. And you, you don't get, and really, you don't get much out of equipment anyway, and landlords found that out years ago. That, you know, once you try to go sell equipment that people have, if they go out of business, it's not worth much, so um. I, I leave it up to you how you wanna handle that, but that is kind of a, a strange circumstance with regard to the commercial.
Yeah.
Cause we never, we didn't have it for commercial before, now we've added the commercial, it's raised that issue.
Right, so I mean, it seems pretty simple that uh if you're leasing a property, any modifications that you're making to the building would have to be agreed upon by the. Property owner anyway. So I would say there would have to be an agreement between the actual property owner and the leasing and or it would have to be. Spent in cash, I mean, that seems pretty cut and dry, doesn't it?
Well, it's just, uh you know, if I were, if I owned a shopping center.
Right.
Hard to imagine, but if I owned a shopping center, and I was leasing out a, a couple of units out of the, out of, let's say, ten, two units out of ten.
Sure.
Um and the cost of that was, you know, eighty thousand dollars. Uh when I want an eighty thousand dollar lien on my, my property, that, if that person were to go out of business, it would be me holding the bag on. The rent and this eighty thousand dollars or whatever it is, I'd make that number up, obviously, but yeah, it can be a lot. Uh I, I just don't see how um a landlord would do that, and that's why. Stats asked you, you have to consider what, what you wanna do about that.
I see. Well, I uh, I'm at a loss for a good way to uh. Cover the city's interests on that personally. Other than getting the landlord to agree and or paying it all upfront, I, I really don't see, or getting their own private financing for it.
Could we make them co-sign on the lease agreement?
Well, I would just say that we, we would have to, it would, it would have to be a requirement, period. Now, what Jerry was saying is, chances are a landlord probably wouldn't want to do that.
Right.
But.
But that would be between the landlord and whoever's renting.
But I mean, then again, I mean, what's the difference between that and uh, you know, build the suit type situations, so. You know, build the suit sometimes if the property owner spends a, a great deal of money to build it for a purpose that. May not necessarily be useful outside of that one tenant, so.
The, there, there is an alternative, it doesn't seem like much of an alternative, but I, I'm gonna throw it out there. Um so let's say that, you know, that the, the person owed a hundred thousand dollars in capacity fees and they went out of business. After they paid twenty thousand dollars, I mean, conceivably. What you could do is just, we say, well, that's all it implies that, that property is twenty thousand dollars with capacity fees, and, and so that amount of ERCs is all they get, period. And leave it at that, it's different than residential where you can't really uh do that, um because see them. They, 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 they ERCs or they don't.
So they would start, uh let's say the payment was, you know, five hundred dollars a month or whatever it is, so they would start paying that five hundred dollars a month. And then if they go out of business in two years, they just simply see, stop paying and.
Yeah, they go out of business, they stop paying, and it's all the capacity that, you know, we'd have to write that into the ordinance, that's all the capacity. That they're gonna get, period, in the story, and then um, if they bring another, uh let, let's say in the case of the laundry, they bring another laundry in. Well, that laundry, you have to start paying on the capacity fees again in order to, to, to have it work.
And well.
Otherwise, you're not gonna be able to move in, but it's, it's the Hallmark Heart Store coming into that old space. Then they're, they're fine, cause they've already, you have already collected a significant amount of the capacity fees upfront as part of the deal. And um so that will have some, some important, I, I just.
Cause we required a down payment, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Is there a percentage?
Well, you don't, you remember how, I can, I can't remember how much it is, but I, I can bring that back to you the next meeting to confirm that up.
I had not thought of that option, but that seemed like a good one.
Uh you know, unlike residential, you know, where you just let tell, hold the bag, and if they sell the house, not telling somebody that, that there's no capacity reserved. Um here, you know, it's just like, well, you've got two thousand gallons for the capacity, even though the laundry needs ten.
Yeah, I guess that would only uh, that would only bite us if it was a particularly large project that would actually influence our day to day operation.
Right.
Well, I'm, I would simply say do what you have to do to get that back for us, as long as the council's general agreement is. Does the council seem amenable to that type of scenario?
It's, it's just one thing I didn't quite understand, he said, you know, so fans, and there was the laundry there, and they paid five hundred a month to their new debt. Then Hallmark came in. Why wouldn't Hallmark pay anything?
They wouldn't pay anything, because they'd already paid well over the one ERC, which all Hallmark car store.
So in other words, we'll be asking for a certain amount for the year?
Well, no, it's still the capacity, you know, it's not a per year, it's a, it's a lump sum, but we're giving them a per year payment plan on the commercial. And here, since they paid well over the, in the one, the Hallmark capacity needs. It would be, it would be fine if it's still, you know, to go to Hallmark car store, but if they tried to put a restaurant in, then they'd have the same problem they had with, with the. They have, they would probably not have paid enough capacity fees yet in order to cover that, and then that's, and whoever's doing that would have to start paying them again.
Okay.
So then, would they take up the current agreement that was already in place, or would they have to start over and have a new agreement?
They would have defaulted, the, the previous uh owner would have defaulted on the, our other payment plan, and that would be over with. And technically, we could go out to the person for the, for the money, but I just don't suggest it, the, the chances are that you're not gonna wanna do that.
Right.
Yeah, cause if somebody went bankrupt, they're probably not gonna have a whole lot to be. Thrown at, at that toward, that sort of situation anyway. thrown at, at that toward, that sort of situation anyway, and so it's kind of like pumping dry well.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, the, the, the possibility is that, you know, you, you just um just hold the capacity, whether, whatever's reserved, and there's no harm, no foul, somebody else comes in and you pay for more, you have to pay for more.
Seems like a very reasonable compromise to me. Okay, well, you have your direction, Jerry, bring it back to us.
All right, thank you.
All right, at number eleven, we have the Florida Department of Corrections, Interagency Public Works Agreements. Uh, did we not already vote on? We didn't vote on, okay.
We voted on the, on the ordinance or?
On the ordinance.
Okay.
Well, excuse me. Are you sure we didn't, are you sure we didn't vote on it?
We did.
We did.
Yeah, we did, because we moved on to Department of Corrections. And I think you need to vote on this, because I'll read something to you.
Yeah. Right. All right, so we have the Florida Department of Corrections, Interagency Public Works Agreements, Mr. Schreier.
Uh, the, the warden can't be here tonight, I read the email he sent, but as you remember, this came to your January tenth meeting and it was, Jerry had a problem with the uh, or concern, not problem, with the identification clause, the the uh, warden did get with his central office, they sent an email, it's in there saying that that's their statewide agreement that they use, and then they can't change that, the only thing they can change is the amount of inmates. So with the, the um, actually um, Shelley had um, asked me a question about what other cities are using this, and I told her that um, Rick Reed had done it, I said Charlotte County, DeSoto County down, he, they used to have men for their wastewater tree and plant. And then Shirley Johnson, when she was with DOC, she was a colonel down in Charlotte County down, that's where she retired, she was running squad. She's the one that actually went out to the warden and got him to get me on this. But uh, what he sent me was, he said, I'm, I'm still working on a list of other cities. Um, he sent an email to the central office, they haven't got back with them. He had an unexpected change in his schedule, and he had to reschedule uh for the twentieth, if that's the way you decide to go. He said uh as I know this is new to some of the cities, I have done this agreement from Henry County stretch in the Everglades City where I was assigned there and all, and all the way to Sumner to include the National Cemetery, we're offering this as a friendly gesture due to not being able to fulfill the supervised squads, I understand there are some concerns, I assure you that we carry the majority of liability. I will be in meetings the majority of today. If you have any questions, please let me know, again, my apologies for not being able to attend tonight's meeting. If needed, we can meet with whoever that needs some clarification in my office prior to the next council. And um, he'll place it on and schedule to be there, so that's where we are on this.
Jerry, from a liability standpoint, you see an issue there with the city of entering this country?
It will, I mean, it technically do, but, but uh, but I think that they've checked on the insurance, and you guys are insured for this, on this uh circumstance, and so um, it's just that whenever you have an identification clause or one side is requiring, you know, person to identify it's generally good procedure that is cross identification. Uh, now, we've done it ourselves to other people, so I, I say that out of the side of my mouth on the one hand, but you know, it's just a matter of what your bargaining power is, and I didn't have, I really didn't think you were gonna get anywhere with this, but I hadn't informed you about it, um, because we don't have any bargaining power, DOT does similar, so.
Do you see any other conflicts with this uh agreement?
Yeah.
Well, I know that the uh, the city staff would sure like to see it, because it would help them out greatly uh with all the maintenance requests. I know if Rick was here, he'd be jumping up and down.
I think he's actually on a divert now?
Yeah. Rick, you there? While he's waking up, we'll see if the council has any questions.
I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm sorry, I couldn't get to it quick enough.
Rick, uh, can you? Could you explain a little bit as to uh, how these inmates would be used and, and what benefits they would have?
Well, the inmates, we could put five guys with uh, one employee to take care of uh, the highways, the the mall, which we, we currently are looking to get employees for, but the, the right-of-ways and everything else, uh, the inmates could be used on. We could use the inmates at the wastewater plant, where, you know, we're still short staff, we can't seem to, you know, um, get somebody in there for that. Um, and even if we did, um, it would be of value to us for maintenance, mowing, disking, you know, everything out at the plant that holds the operators up on a daily basis of what they're supposed to be doing, so I think it would be a great thing. I worked with them for five years at DeSoto, um, my wife currently works there, she's been working with inmates for over ten years, her guys get them every day, utilize them, she's never had any issues, I've never had any issues. Um, I think it was a great thing, um, DeSoto County ended up hiring two of the inmates when they got out. Um, and utilize them, still today, they still have one that they utilize at the plant.
Okay, so Rick, obviously, they have to be watched, uh, so we have to have staff members to, to actually watch them, but how many employees would you say that they would save the city from having to utilize? Would it save us?
If we can get this.
Guys, three guys, what do you, what do you think?
Well, if, if, you know, you get the same employees like we did when I worked for DeSoto, my wife gets the same employees, uh, like I said, they come in, they know the routines, they check the plants, they do the maintenance, you know, it's, it's a, basically, it takes place of an employee. I mean, they, they work good, they wanna work, you know, um, they're there every day, um, they don't call out, so I think it's a, I think it's a good thing, I've, I've had very good luck with them, and like I said, you know, my wife's been using them for ten years herself and she's had very good luck with them.
Yes. All right, uh, anything else to add, Rick?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Do we have any questions from city council to stem? Go ahead.
Okay, so we, we're planning on getting five inmates for one person. One, one city employee.
Pull that microphone down.
Oh, we're gonna get five, five uh inmates to one city worker. Now, um, the training for the city worker is gonna be approximately, I think, eight hours?
I don't know, I said maybe four to eight, I don't know, it's, if, in their um agreement here, they have a statewide training, how long it lasts, I don't know.
Because for a certified officer, it's sixteen weeks.
Right.
Sixteen, so how are you gonna train one employee to watch five inmates?
Because.
Without a sixteen week certification?
Because our person's not gonna be a correction officer.
Exactly.
Right.
So are they gonna learn DTs, are they gonna know how to handle gas, are they gonna know how to handle cups, are they gonna be trained for a CPR train in case there's an emergency?
No, they're not gonna have cups or, or pepper spray or anything like that.
Because I know you can get the best of the best inmates, best of the best, takes that one inmate to just tear it all apart. And they're, they're out on the streets, and, and are the workers gonna be, feel comfortable, are they gonna feel comfortable having five inmates with them? All day long, are they gonna have a working lunch, where they don't take their eyes off the inmates?
That, that's, that, that's all gonna be worked out in here, if we have someone who doesn't feel comfortable, then they won't go to training and won't be able to supervise them.
So what are the um um, I don't know, what, what if, what if one just misbehaves and the city worker can't handle it, who, who's gonna come and pick him up?
DOC is in the, in their agreement.
So until DOC has somebody to stop what they're doing, come in to pick this inmate up? You know, are, are the other four gonna cooperate, are they gonna jump on the wagon and get, get crazy?
I have no idea, you're asking things like, I'm out there.
Can I say something?
Sure.
In my experience with them, the inmates that we got were usually on the down slide, so they weren't in there for twenty years. They might have done fifteen, but they were on their way out, so the majority of them don't wanna ruin because they're gonna start all over and everything else, so I mean, we had, I had very good luck with them, like I said, I worked with them for five years, my wife worked with them for five years. There's no guarantee, but, you know, they, DeSoto County ended up hiring two of them when they came out with licensed operators, so you know, anything can happen, but most of the time it's a success.
You know, obviously, you're passionate about this issue, uh, it sounds like you have personal experience with it, or some, something that would lead you to believe it.
I just don't, I just feel like it's a, it's a liability.
But is that from?
It's a liability that's gonna come back on the city, if we have an, an, a city employee who you know, they, they turn their back for one second.
Right.
Uh, some of these inmates are from Avon Park, who say that they're not gonna arrange from the inside to get picked up or to get contraband to get in to the, to the prison.
Well, let's play worst-case scenario, so Jerry, what would happen if there was five inmates with one of our city workers and one of those inmates decides to kill that city worker? What, what would happen? We get to.
That's just, that's just how it is, I mean, uh, doesn't mean that they would win, doesn't mean, it doesn't, you know, to, but there's no doubt that you're sued because you're deep pockets, but um, um, probably state would be sued as well. And uh, you know, you probably find a half dozen other people who sue. That's how personal injury works in, in the United States.
Is that something that our insurance would protect us from?
Insurance would, would not uh cover us for the amount that it is but also for that, for whatever amount we're covered for, uh, but they would also defend us. So you would have to pay an attorney to go defend us as well. It's like, it's the same as if one of your employees had, you know, just got mad at somebody, you know, uh, meter reader or something got mad at it, at one of your, your customers and punched him in the face.
Sure.
You'd get sued, you know, but uh, that's what you have insurance for.
Sure.
Would, you know, and now, that's, that's something where, you know, even if we had identification, we'd still be, you know, covering that aspect of it, right, within the fight, the state, but that, they've checked with the insurance company, they understand it's an identification clause there, so
Wait.
And it's, it's a risk, but there's a risk in just about everything.
Is it any different than, let's say, you know, we have these giant trash trucks that drive on the roads all the day, all day? If they hit another car and, and happen to kill someone, you know, it's all the same general type of liabilities, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, you know, I'll just tell you that, you know, I taught a law class and first day of class, I said, don't, don't ever ask me whether we can be sued for this or for that, I said, of course you can be sued.
Yeah.
Any idiot can sue for anything, but it's a matter of, you know, have, if you insure yourself, so number one you know, which is a, a good part of it, obviously, is that it covers the judgment if you lose. But number, the biggest part is the fact that they defend you, which can be hundreds of thousands of dollars, they defend you. And so that's, that really is why the insurance, because there's just no way you're gonna prevent getting, getting sued. I, you know, I think we gotta sue, well, I'm not gonna use an example.
For.
But, but uh, that's just, yeah, that's how it is. Uh, you know, is it, is it a, uh, possibly a more um lawsuit-rich environment, possibly, but it, you know, it doesn't sound astounding to me as much as other circumstances were brought, brought to our attention, the city's been doing in the past already which we, which uh, the city manager is fixed.
So, whenever we have uh inmates working in the city, I mean, it's already somewhat common for city employees to be directing them working around them, telling them they'd like, you know, this side of that lake mode, and that side of that sidewalk mode, and that sort of thing, right?
Correct, they do have a corrections officer with them, but yes, we'll give them their marching orders, I guess, and say what we want them to do.
Yeah, the uh, the corrections officer that comes out with the inmates now, what is their ratio, is it one corrections officer to five, is it more than that, less than?
Yeah, I mean, Rick.
It's five, yeah, you, usually they have, they have five inmates, and I mean, we don't have to give the employee five, well, we can give them three. I mean, you know, I've talked to my guys at the wa, at the wastewater plant, and they would love to have two guys. Um, they've worked with them in the past, and uh, here at Avon Park, they've worked with them in the past, and had very good luck with them.
Yeah, yeah, I recall that they did it for quite some time here. Um, but there's not actually gonna be a correction officer present while they're doing work, that's gonna be employees training.
Correct.
Okay.
And they actually have training for their civilian staff or anybody like in this case, city staff that would be trained. And like Rick brings up, there might be days we can use five, there might be days you just need three, we may decide, our guy says, I'm gonna keep an eye on three, so we'll use three.
Can you request certain inmates and say we don't wanna work with a certain individual that has given us problems or?
Uh, all we gotta do is tell them to pull that person in, it's right in here. They'll, they'll pull that person in, they'll come pick them up, and they'll come back out.
If someone has a bad attitude, they, we don't have to work with them.
No, they won't be here, they, even one of the CO was out here, they had a couple they pulled back in, just because they, they have a bad attitude or something, so. But the guys I met here and the ones at the sheriff's office, these guys here, they love, they're gone down there, they go to to public works, they'd be down there eating their lunch and that, they love being out, they like being out of the, the prison, they enjoy it, they don't wanna mess up. Every once in a while, some guy gonna take off, yeah, that may happen, there's things that happen in life, I mean, there's scenarios, but I I think this is a win for the city, I appreciate the warden for um you know, extending this to us, because we're not gonna get these inmates back with CO for a long time, because DOT is still having extremely hard time filling the position they have. We actually have a sixteen-year employee looking to come work for us, because they, they're, there's, their manpower is, work power is down, so forces down, that they're getting a little scared, they don't have enough people working there, so they're, they're not hiring left and right to bring people on.
I see, okay. Any other questions from council?
I do.
Go ahead.
I talked to Mark today, visited him in his office, and I spent a minute there, so he already know how I feel. I feel the same way council Shelley does.
Okay.
And like I told Mark, you're looking at a seventeen and a half year correction officer, and it ain't nothing to play with. So when you're talking about putting five minimum custody inmates on a city employee that does not have the proper training, I have an issue with it. I just have an issue with it, it's, it's just, okay, watch this, if, if, if while I was a correction officer and I had what they called the outside squad, and I had to put five inmates on me, I'll be comfortable with that. I got the training, I got the training, I got the knowledge, what it takes, I know how manipulative it can be. So, an incident, driving home from APCI, when I used to work there it was a big semi truck, and I was coming to the four-way stop sign before you get to Avon Park High School. And the semi truck is pulled over on the side of the road, and there's a big bull, a burl. And I slowed down, and I watched him, he went to the burl, and he pulled out a shotgun. Okay, I, I witnessed it, I saw it. So I didn't want him to see me watching him, so I went on to the stop sign, I pulled over and I came back just to see. Of course, I had it uh reported that same day, I had to report that, because I know inmates work on the side of that road. I'm talking about the road as you pass Avon Park High School going to APCI, I know inmates work that road, you see them all the time. Why was that shotgun left there? I know it's extreme, the, the incident I'm using, I just find it I just find it hard that you'll put five inmates on a city employee that just don't have the training. And Mark, I understand, we need the help in the city to, to clean it up, we need that help. And, and we need it, and, and we can get it from the Department of Corrections, I get that. I, I agree with everything that was, that they writ, that they wrote in, I, I agree with all of, I just don't agree with the, putting the inmates on the city employees, they're not trained for that. And, and if we did, if we did, if we, if we took that, those five in, uh, uh inmates and we put it on that one employee, we better have the best employee you got out there. Because you, you gotta constantly, you gotta, you know, if you're a certified correction officer, your mind is constantly running about what it is. If I'm wrong, don't, it's thirty minutes, every thirty minutes, you gotta put a, I, put your eyes on it. You, you constantly worrying about what he's at and what he's doing and who he's manipulating, that's just a correction officer mind. You got the constantly, your mind constantly running, because they got twenty-four hours to think, you only got it. It's just how I feel.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
And, and, and don't get me, I'm sorry, don't get me wrong, we can have the best inmate come out and, and, and work and run smoothly and everything. It only take one time. And you're right. You get some good ones. They come out. They're moms people. They see the pretty girls on the streets and the beautiful car. They love that. But you got to get some good ones. You got to get some good ones, cause there's always gonna be one in the bunch. It's always gonna be one in the bunch. It better be some good ones and your city employee, he better, he better be on his toes. He can't be a slacker.
So uh, Ms. Taylor, you were a uh, prison guard?
I was a correction officer and a deputy.
So you worked with, with?
I worked with inmates.
Did you ever work on the out, this, what do you call the?
Never worked on the outside. See them? I mean, I was a correction officer and you don't watch them. They don't know I'm a correction officer. They're trying to talk.
But you worked extensively with them.
Yes, I have.
Oh. Well, I mean, that, that means a lot. You worked with them.
Yes, I have. Very many.
Shelley, did you also?
No.
All right. So we've got uh, a lot of opinions here. So is there any other uh, questions or comments from any other council members?
I have a comment if that's okay.
We'll just have to get your name and address.
Yes, Cheryl, um, twenty-three, twenty-six Roxbury Road, Avon Park, Florida.
Okay, Cheryl, what can we do for you?
I just wanted to, um, as I'm listening in and I'm, I'm fairly new to this, but I did want to bring to the attention of everyone that a correctional facility is shot, not just to hold um, inmates for committing a crime against society, but also to re- rehabilitate. Um, and also as I review, um, the documentation, the agreement, there's responsibilities on both parts. So say for instance, um, with the ex corre- ex-correctional officer, that situation she had, if someone was to run or to escape, um, it's in there that that is one of the things that the DOC would be responsible for is apprehending them. Um, so if they do take their eyes off of them for a moment, um, it won't be their responsibility to apprehend them. In the agreement, DOC will do that. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention. Yes, it's, you know, a situation where we have, you know, very just causes on both ends, but I think we should also remember, um, the reason behind, um, it altogether, you know, the work, working. And that's to help re- re- rehabilitate them. And it's as Rick stated, um, most of these guys are, they're on the down end, so they're not trying to mess up anything. They're getting ready to get out. They're gonna be in society anyway. They're coming. So and they're very close to that door and they really don't want to mess it up. So although I understand what, what the women are saying, um, I do want, think, you know, that's something that should be taken into consideration. No, we don't know, um, what tomorrow, the next moment may bring, but I, I don't see why not giving, why not give it a chance? The city needs it. And those that are being rehabilitated to be back into society also needs it. Thank you.
I'll answer that. I'll answer that. Yes, they rehab. Yes, by all means rehab them so they're ready to come out with a trained correctional officer, not with a city employee. What is the consequence of that employee gonna be if he turns his head and something happens? Is, is he gonna be fired because he wasn't trained correctly? Is, is he gonna be reprimanded because man, you turned your head and you let that correction officer run off. Now what? We have a main artery, which is twenty-seven, which in no time. Yes, they're great. They might be great. They might be on, on, you know, getting out early, but like Taylor said, there's always that one.
That's just not the city employee's responsibility though.
Okay, well then.
And they won't be getting out early. They're actually be, they've served their time and they're being released. So it's not an early release. It's that they have come, they're completing their time, served their sentence, paid their time and then they'll go.
Under care. They're still under care of the Department of Corrections. Mark, the training that you said that, that, that Florida developed uh, it's for these types of situations is specifically for a civilian to be in charge of someone else to train that they're gonna undergo?
Yes. Now again, they're not gonna become corrections officers. That's not the, the object of it. And they're gonna, if someone got in a car and took off, they're gonna call. They're probably gonna call the warden. They're gonna call the sheriff's office. And I mean, that's the same thing. If there was a CO out there, they're gonna call in too. They're not gonna take off every one person and leave the rest.
Right.
So, you know, and again, Rick and I, this has nothing personal to us. This was an opportunity brought to us by DOC. Right. And what the decision is, it is, we think it's a, a good program. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But the, the ones we've seen out here with COs, the hardworking guys are out there on twenty-seven. And I can tell you, we'll be coming back. And, and this, I'm not saying this because of, but we don't have enough people to keep up. Once the grass starts growing again, we're gonna be back asking for more employees because we can't keep up with what we got. And that's not to use against this. I mean, that's, it's a personal thing. Obviously, if someone believes we should have inmates out here supervised by city staff. Is there a liability yet? Is liability on me and everything as a city manager? Because Ms. Jerry will tell you, we all get named in suits and, you know, it's I, I can only say personally, I think it's a good, um, deal they're offering us here, an agreement Rick does, um, Dave Roberts who'd be overseeing most of these, the ones that are, are working out here mowing or weed whacking or whatever. And I don't know if y'all even ever saw it. When we did have them out here prior to COVID, they were out on twenty-seven and that's pretty much what they stay. And there's the CO watching them. There's, or sometimes CO will be working alongside someone. So.
So is it at the city's discretion as far as how many we have?
Yes, yes.
We allow them to go?
Yes.
So would it make you guys feel better if we limited it rather than start off with five? Start off with maybe two or three? No, it will make me feel better if we had a trained personnel out there instead of a city worker. Unless we look into maybe hiring a, um, a retired, um, corrections officer or a retired, um, law enforcement officer who's willing to go out there because the city employees aren't gonna be doing anything with it. Basically babysitting them. I'm sorry to say it like that, but why not get, pay somebody who is trained, pay somebody who knows what to look for? Have them sit out there where they can drive out there. They can pick them up. It's not taking time out from the city employee to do this. That way you still have a city employee to do stuff.
All right, we have someone with a hand up. I saw your hand first, sir. Give your name and address and then we'll, we'll get to you.
Okay.
Right for him out there.
Eric Wilson, um, fourteen, twenty-five South Carolina Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Um, I worked for pride. Prison interesting.
Okay.
For twenty-one years. And I managed to interview him. We had to have the same training as correctional officers. And what, and my suggestion is why not have one of your city employees go through that same training? Go through that same training that the DOC, DOC goes through. And the, and I mean, he, he, he then can understand what to look for. Whether, whether or not, you know, that, that inmate is gonna be manipulative or whatever. But put them through the same training. I think it's a good idea to have them to work, the five guys or whatever. We, we, we were, you know, we had eleven per one person. Uh, so I mean, but that was because we were able to go through the same training.
Right.
And we were able to understand what was going on with the inmates and when and how to utilize them in manufacturing a product to sell back to the state. Why not use them through the same thing? Have me, have, have a, a city employee go through the same training.
How long was the training that you went through?
The DOC training, uh, uh.
When I went through it, it was nine months.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and then, but the thing is, he didn't have, he didn't have to do it. We didn't have to do it, uh, all at one time. You know, we, we had the training and then we had to go back to the refresh course each, each year.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Alice, send your hand up. You know the drill.
Alan Hudson, nine oh three South Time Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and listen to this. I agree with these two young ladies. What's the problem in getting a professional guy to train him like you used to? They would look at him like they used to. Money? You can't pay him?
Just time trying to get something in place. That's all. That, that's the main issue.
I'm just wondering where the money going if you can't get those guys who are professional that we used to have with the gun on his side and watching these guys and trained to do that? Why, why can't you get them? Because you get a sub as a teacher for thirty-eight years, I would never be a sub. Because a sub didn't get the same respect as a teacher that's there all the time. So you need to either create some funds to get the professional people out there or I don't know about the training. But it's hard to train people that, uh, just normal people to work with criminals. You have to have a special view. So if, if it's money, some kind of way, we, we, we need to pay these people to do it. I, I, I see we losing a lot of, uh, employees because we, we, we work and I'm not paying them. We need to pay these people to clean the city up. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Well, we've always have got options. You know, there's uh, some things brought up of trying to get the employees to be trained. Uh, Mark, is there anybody that's currently gone through this, uh, was it six-hour course that we have?
I don't know how long theirs are. They did go through, of course, the sheriff's office, the, to get the community, um, maintenance people here. We've had one. They've done a great job working with Mike Stone. I don't know if they, we found another, or Sheriff's Office found another one yet?
So you're saying that Mike Stone has done?
Well, through the sheriff's office. Remember you approved the community maintenance program where in lieu of the judge putting someone in the county jail, they allow them to do, to work. And we've had one, and unless we're, can tell me had more, I know we had one that came out. But some of our guys went down to Sheriff's Office and were trained on that. But this training, I don't specifically know what they do, exactly how many hours. But like I said, it says in here, it's a state approved and wanted to do everywhere.
So are we currently, uh, deficient in our, um, maintenance crews? Do we need, do we have open positions in those group?
We have the two new ones you approved for the mall are open. And do we have, are we full on the other one?
We, well, we have the three in the streets and we don't have a maintenance position like work.
Yeah, but no, yeah, but he, uh, you're not talking about Mike Stone. You're talking about the one to take care of the mow and add.
Right.
We've got one, three openings, two are the new ones. Actually, we just advertise and pay people and try and find people to experience.
So my question is, what extra do you think it would take to hire someone who is perhaps a trained, uh, prison guard?
Can, can I, can I say something?
Yes.
We, we just interviewed a gentleman that we're looking at possibly hiring from there. Would that be a possibility, Mark, to put him over them?
No.
Thirteen years?
He, yeah, but he's, he's coming on in C and D and that's a higher pay scale. And the city.
We.
Employee corrections officers. I mean, if you got someone with a background, well, what background do they have? And that we, you're not gonna hire corrections officers or law enforcement officers here.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I mean, as, as Brittany was saying, on a, uh, you know, a trial basis, starting out with one and see how it goes and go to two and see how that goes. You know, go to three and so on and so forth. I mean, I think that the, the employee is gonna have a good handle on if they feel comfortable or not. And if this person seems like a danger to them or not. Uh, or to anyone else around them. So the entire purpose, as far as I was aware, is to use, uh, most of these individuals in open spaces that are away from the public. Whether on the highway, um, at the treatment plant, places like that. Anyway, you know, this isn't, we're not intending to use these people around preschools, uh, you know, women's zones and, you know, higher risk areas. They're, they're, they're kind of out, out of the way. So I really don't see a problem with approving it and starting it on a trial basis and use their best judgment to go on and see if we have any issues.
Do we have, do we have a way of requesting, um, I don't wanna say the type of people that they send us, but in other words, those that have clean records since they've been in jail?
Well, they, they.
Fighting or?
Yeah, in prison system, in the jail, they use classification system. So, I mean, they're the, the lower in the classification. I don't know what they called in the prison system, but they're not your murderers and rapists and that. And the warden told me he would make sure he handpicks them for us. Then again, in some, but can anything happen? Yes, it can happen with any of our employees. You know, we got employees that commit crimes. So.
Right? Yeah.
I agree. Brittany, to answer your question, I hate to use this term, but this is what corrections use a lot. So if I offend anybody, it's not my intention. It's the one that may have hit their wife one time too many. One that write bad checks, you know, it's those types of inmates, minimum custody, which is authorized work outside of the gate. Those are, they, they, their custody is very minimum. I mean, at the work camp when I was there, they can come out to twelve o'clock midnight and walk the yard. Where the main unit had to shut down at a certain time, had to be inside. So these are, these are not your murderers and your rapists. No, these are not those types of inmates. These are, these are the inmates that the judge say, you're gonna do three hundred and sixty-five days.
Plus one.
Plus one. Those are those types of inmates.
So if they're not typically a violent inmate, what is the, the great risk here?
The great risk is the contraband that they can get a hold of while they out there. A lot of people don't realize, um, I'm more concerned about the staff than I am the inmate. You're really, you're really, I'm more concerned about the staff because here it goes. There have been many correction officers that has gotten in trouble for giving inmates illegal things.
Sure.
And, and when you don't have that proper training, it's so easy to be manipulated by, you know, man, give me a cigarette. Or give me a piece of gum. Or let me go behind the building for a minute. You don't got, y'all don't got to be buddy buddy. And so now you're allowing him to do things that he shouldn't be doing.
I see.
Now you're doing it with a correction officer. Cause imagine what you're gonna do it with someone that you already know that don't have the skills.
Well, we've got a lot of discussion here, so we need to make that decision. We're gonna continue on or table it or what we're gonna do. So I'll make a call once. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we just, um, mix this, just, um, come back to it when the Department of Corrections has enough staff that they can provide us with a correction officer on the street.
If I can add that, we already know the agreement of place. You already approved that. So we don't have to do anything nor for that. Okay. Do you know, I haven't heard anything out of you.
Yeah, I just got one comment, uh, that seems that Rick seems pretty comfortable with, uh, using the, uh, these inmates. So what if we were just to allow one or two or three to be used at the water treatment plant? Where he has minimum access to, uh, just a few city employees and they work in the same area. They're out of the way of the public. And then we could just use that as a trial basis. That at least would help us out at one location. And at the same time be a trial and see how it works. But, uh, I understand what the ladies are saying. Uh, it does make sense. I think the preferred ways, we have a trained correction officer, but if, if Rick and his people are willing to, uh, use them again, he says use them in the past out there at the water treatment plant. I think I could, uh, go along with just that minimum amount.
You, you, you know, I, I, I believe in trying to help people out and uh, like I said, in DeSoto County, they currently have so, well, I don't know what I can say when I can't, but um, I know that they get their license by working at the water plant and the wastewater plant. So when they turn out back into the public, they have a license. It's an incentive not to bust that. Because when they turn out, they have somewhere they can go and get a job and make a decent wage. And, and, and our industry in the water and wastewater right now, there's not any operators out there that's available. And they have the opportunity to get their license. Every day they're there, they sign the books and they learn the pro- the plant process and they're able to take the test while they're inside. So when they turn out, they're able to have a license and they're able to come back out of society and get a job. Uh, uh, you know, a, a good job. Not just a, a job as a weed eater or, or whatever they can come up with. I mean, they're licensed. You know, to me, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're helping people. So it's whatever y'all want. I work for you guys. I'll do whatever you wanna do, but I just don't think everybody's that bad.
All right. So Mark, I think, uh, you're kinda getting.
All right, so Mark, I think uh you're kind of getting the message that we wanna, you know, if if it goes forward, it'll be on a trial basis, perfectly away from the public as much as possible and see how it goes from there. Does that seem agreeable? It does? Okay. All right, is there a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between the Florida Department of Corrections and our agency public works agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further questions?
No, I'll just make the comment that we start off with the minimum amount of people and use them at the water treatment plant only.
I agree.
Agreed.
On trial, on a trial basis.
All right, is any further questions, comments? Seeing them, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item number twelve, this item will be tabled for now. Come up at our next meeting, item number thirteen, we have a quarterly budget report, Melody?
Yes, so you have before you your very first um financial update for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two.
Mike, I'm just.
Okay, so the way that I've put this together, um and as this is your very first report, if there's any information that um you feel needs to be included or if it's too much information, please let me know and I will tweak it to what you guys prefer. So I've broken this out into funds, so the very first report will be on the general fund. Um so it will show you that the revenues received year to date is approximately one point nine million dollars. Our revised budget is the same as the original budget, I have not revised it down in the general fund. The remaining revenues to be received is three point one million. We have received thirty-eight percent um of the revenues year to date, and that's because our ed, the law and tax and fire assessment fees come in at the beginning of the year. So that will taper off. Our expenses, um the number that I have there in year to date should actually be one million thirty-six thousand. Our revised budget is six point eight million, the original budget was six point seven million, which is an increase of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um and if you see down below, I've addressed um those amounts. So the Highlands County Sheriff's Office actually reduced their contract by eighty-nine thousand dollars. Because of the patrol deputies, um two of them did not come on until November, and there will be another one deployed in April. Um we also increased the sheriff's office um department for a garage door that is needed out at the um substation. For six thousand seven hundred dollars. And we also have to transfer two hundred and four thousand dollars to the airport, excuse me, airport fund to cover the classic palladium repairs that were brought before council.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, to go to the next page, the next page is our infrastructure fund, um our year-to-date revenues are two fifty-seven. The budget for revenues have not been revised. Um we've collected approximately twenty-two percent of revenues. Our expenses year-to-date are eight eighty-two. We revised the budget from one point four million to one point six million, and that is in direct relation to the um expenses for. We had some roll forwards, so a lot of times at the end of the year, expenses are not um, they're incurred, encumbered, but not spent. So they transfer to the next year, so fiscal year twenty-one um budget will decrease by those rollovers, but it increases um the next fiscal year.
So on that, what would have been decreased for the prior year would have hypothetically went into reserves, and this would come from that.
So it would be the, if you see the three, the first one is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. So that was a roll forward for fire hydrants that were not purchased last year.
Right.
So that expense will roll forward into twenty-two, but the budget for twenty-one will be reduced.
Okay.
And the reserves will be.
Yeah.
Increased for the prior year. So the next page, the C D B G fund, this is for the um fair housing grant, which was not budgeted, so it's a wash, we budgeted the revenues coming in and the expenses going out. Uh the next funds are the um community redevelopment agencies, um and. Um the these, but these revenues that come in also come in like the ed, the law and tax, um they come in at the beginning of the year. So you'll see that we're eighty-five percent received for revenues. We have not revised the revenues, the expenses um. We revised the budget, we only originally budgeted twenty thousand, but as you know, we increased for facade grants three hundred and thirty thousand. The water and sewer fund, um our revenues received to date are, we're at about twenty-nine percent. We have revised the budget by two hundred and twenty-six thousand for revenues. And that is in direct relation to the American Rescue Plan Fund Act, American Rescue Plan Act funds that we we received for the wastewater master plan. And the D E P um sand and grit removal grant. Um the expenses, uh we're right at sixteen percent. Um the original budget was five point two million, we revised the budget to five point seven million. Most of those expenses, as you can see, are um purchase order roll forwards. And then the two main are the American Rescue Plan Fund and the sand and grit removal.
Okay.
Um the next fund is the airport fund, um we have revised the. Revenues by four hundred and two thousand, and that's due to the transfer from the general fund. And also we have two grants, the apron planning grant and the um airport rescue grant for the utilities. Um the expenses were also increased by basically the same amount, and that is the the apron grant and um classic palladium, the roof and the restrooms. Uh the next fund is the sanitation fund, and we have made no revisions in that fund. Um the last page is um. Items that will need um council approval, so there will be a budget addition to the police department for six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for the garage doors. Interdepartmental transfers, seventy-eight hundred from finance, regular wages to general government property tax. So the brickwork building, normally a governmental building, you don't pay um property taxes on, but because the brickwork building, we own it. But we cannot prove that it's used for governmental services, so we have to pay taxes on it. Um and we can transfer the those amounts from the finance department because we have um wages for a position that's not been filled.
Okay.
Um thirty-eight thousand, excuse me, from, excuse me, from council capital outlay. Anybody got any water?
Just use water, use water, please, use water.
No, I'm not drinking that. So thirty-eight thousand from the council capital outlay that had, we originally budgeted a hundred thousand for repetitions here for the audio video. And it only cost, right now, about twenty grand to other governmental um services. The South Florida State College franchise fee was discussed during the budget process, but it, for some reason, it didn't make it into the original, the um official budget that's passed. So we'll move it from that department to general governmental. Um inter-fund transfers, as I discussed, the two hundred and four thousand from the general fund to the airport fund for the revisions to classic palladium roof and restrooms. And the community redevelopment agencies, um there was a few things in there that were not budgeted, the roof planning for the redevelopment plan that um had been brought before you guys. Um three thousand for accounting and auditing and four hundred and fifty dollars for Florida Redevelopment Association membership.
Okay. Any questions for Melody?
Great job.
Seeing none, thank you very much, and like Melody was saying, if you have any uh observations or if you'd like to see something in a different format, just let her know.
Mayor, can I just add on to what she was talking about, Sheriff's Office, in case anybody didn't understand, Sheriff's Office, like anybody else, having a hard time finding law enforcement officers to hire. So um actually, they're supposed to bill us every month, but I got ahold of the C P A down there, and we hadn't got it yet. That's because they were actually crunching the numbers to be right on target with us, if they, you know, who wasn't here, we're not paying for, so that's where that that shows.
Okay. Very good. A question on the garage door uh for the old police station, so are we responsible for all maintenance on the building then?
Yes, that, yes, and that's, that's their salator door, the big heavy one, it was broke last year, we were trying to get it fixed. We got ahold of two or three different companies, and it actually is gonna cost more to fix it than buying a new one.
Okay. All right, what kind of updates do you have for us?
Um the last um meeting, you approved um Park Southern being a new special magistrate, and was gonna come back to you. It is gonna cost more money for him to have the health practice insurance down there. He got with his um insurance carrier and he already had that endorsement, so we're good to go. Um as you know, Mayor, you signed off, Park signed off, and we just need to get Jerry's okay to the form, and we're good to go, but Park's up and running, I agree.
Yes, excellent.
Um the only other thing I have is. I do. Um our new supervisor of election, um Karen sent a letter, she's requesting for um the upcoming elections this year. Precinct one, the community center, precinct two, um city council chambers and early voting city council chambers. I know it was brought up by a a couple of you about um using across the street used to, and she deemed that it wasn't ADA compliant bathrooms. So couldn't take care of what we needed, so this is what she's requesting, if you approve it, we'll get it signed and down to her.
Okay. But would you need a motion for that?
I think to do the jury. Need a motion?
Okay, do we have a motion to allow the supervisor of elections to utilize our facilities for the next election?
Still move.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second, is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
What else, yeah?
About it, our new I T um person is, is on a job, extremely, extremely busy, I'll get him over here once we meet him, so you can meet him.
David's name tapping?
Um.
Oh, okay.
We'll have a meeting tomorrow morning with our outgoing and him, so I'll see you after the meeting.
All right.
That's it.
So yeah, but is there anything else to do to the city? Seeing no hands, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.